And we will start the presentation with Superintendent Adam Steele.
Thank you very much. We have three goals with our budget this year. Those three goals were to pass a budget that supports our continued strategic efforts, support our four-year agreement with our PPC or our teacher and staff agreement that fixes some of our competitive imbalances, and then pass the first year of a 20-year capital maintenance plan. And so, we want to talk you through all three of those goals tonight and start by explaining, first of all, how we're performing as a school system. First, we hear in the news a lot about US schools are failing in comparison to other schools. Even this article from December 3rd in the Wall Street Journal shows how the United States compares against other top-performing economies in the world, and the US is not doing so hot. But at Sohagan, when we compare ourselves to other countries, we're doing exceptionally well on average. So, the PISA exam that we took, that's taken all over the world, schools all over the world, and reading our school, the average score for our school compares to the average school in Singapore and does extremely well and is on par there. If we compare in math, we also similarly do exceptionally well and would be third if we were a country, which we certainly are not. And then in science, we're far and away doing extremely well. Something more relatable to folks in Amherst would be our SAT scores. How are we doing on our SAT scores compared to the school districts we care most about, which is our most competitive school systems? So, in reading, when we compare ourselves, and you may not be able to read at the bottom, but these are schools, Pellon, Milford, Merrimack, Portsmouth, Exeter, Boe, Oyster River, Hopkinton, Wyndham, Bedford, Hollis, and Dresden, we're right in the middle compared to our top-performing peers. And then in math, similarly, we're doing well but still have some room for improvement there when it comes to our SAT scores. So, we're very proud of the performance of our high school in particular and all of our schools throughout SAU 39 from an academic performance perspective. How are we doing financially? It's important to note that while our population has decreased, the budget for the Sohagan Cooperative School District has increased a total of 1.3% since 2011 in total, 1.3%. Now, while our population has gone down, nothing is less expensive now than it was 10 years ago. Everything has gone up: health insurance, cost of teachers, electricity, everything. Last year, we also underspent our budget by $1.2 million, mostly due to special education, but we run a very tight ship when it comes to our expenditures that we're trusted with from the community. And then, over the last four years, we've started special education programs in the Amherst School District, which will be matriculating to the Sohagan Cooperative School District next year, and we've saved over $6.1 million in real tax dollars by running those programs over the last four years. An important part of those, a component of those programs is we've kept kids in district that otherwise would have had to go to out-of-district placements. And when we talk about the budget, our budget is up in large measure because of the cost of running these programs, but not nearly as up as it would be if these students had to go out of district. And then finally, related to financial performance, the amount the state pays in adequacy across the state, the state's contribution to what we, to offset our taxes, has increased about $229 per student since 2012, but for SAU 39 has gone down $105 during that time. And so, we're paying more of the share here in SAU 39 than in other towns. Where are we going as a school system? You might find these next slides familiar as we've talked in various places about these sorts of things, but this is what school used to look like. And many people around town still believe school ought to look like this and that it still perhaps does look like this. In fact, I heard someone say once, "This was good enough to get us to the moon, so why does school need to continue to improve?" Well, we used to teach math that looked something like this. This was arithmetic. Arithmetic's an important skill, but it was all the more important back when there were no such things as calculators or computers to do the simple arithmetic. And we taught math like this and had classrooms that looked like that last slide because this is what most of our jobs look like. But the reality is employers of today are looking for different types of skill sets in their employees. This is from the World Economic Forum's job report that shows what skills are expected of our students today when they leave high school and college. And even high-tech firms, even scientific firms, have core competencies that reflect things like creativity, complex problem-solving, and coordinating with others as a part of what they look for in the students and the people that they hire. And so, it's no surprise that we teach math now that looks more like this. This is a second or third grade math problem that our students learn because they're learning using higher-order thinking skills beyond just arithmetic to solve those problems. And we do that because really, jobs look more like this now, today, than the jobs of the past. And so, in SAU 39, we have a portrait of a graduate, the things we want our students to be able to say about themselves, about who they are, that include things like being an effective communicator, a critical thinker, a confident global citizen, skilled collaborator, engaged learner, and knowledge constructor, because we believe that reflects the type of student we want to produce to enter and become a contributing member of society. And so, with that said, we're working through the vision of how school ought to be to produce the types of students that we know that we need. And so, what we believe every child deserves is first, a unique roadmap to success in a world of change. We know that every student is different and unique, and we know that the individual challenges, strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities for each student differ. We believe every student needs to be challenged. The data shows that our students that are struggling learners are growing at an exceptional pace. In fact, the most growth in our students come from those who are struggling learners, who are doing exceptionally well. But our, some of our students at the top end of the achievement scale, they're not growing as fast as other learners, and we know that we need to find a way to challenge every student. Students are coming into our school system with different needs and often with less social and emotional skills that are taught at home. And so, we believe one thing that our students will need is a connection with an adult who can guide them for longer than the typical one-year grade-level concept where we have a relationship with a teacher for a year, June comes, we say goodbye and start the process over again the next year. And then finally, we're investigating ways that we can find a way to change the paradigm as it relates to next steps for our students. We believe that the cost of college and a four-year degree is outrageous for many of our students, and we need to find a way to change that paradigm somehow. And we're working with some higher ed partners to find a way to change that paradigm somehow. And that's what we're investigating. So, I'm going to turn back over to our school board to talk through the budget at this point in time, but I want to reiterate that our three areas of focus this year are around our budget to continue these strategic efforts and our investigation to change our school system into the type of school system that reflects the needs of our learners. And then, we're going to talk more about our four-year teacher agreement and our capital maintenance plan. So, Chairman Manning.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to cover about the next four slides or so. If you can just keep it here on the summary for one second. So, I just want to reiterate at the beginning of the year, and I want to do so by thanking a few people that are here, and it'd probably help me if I put my glasses on, I can actually see. The work of the Sohagan Advisory Finance Committee, every single year is outstanding, so I want to recognize the work that that group does. They're all volunteers. They spend a lot of time on the budget. And just looking, scanning the crowd here, I see George Bauer, Jeanne Lute, and Mark Vincent. I don't know if there's anybody else in the room on that committee. I can't see anyone, but I just, oh, Howard, sorry, Howard. I can't see you under your hat. And I think that's it. So, I want to thank the Advisory Finance Committee for everything they've done to help us put this budget together. Some of the goals that supported the budget, again, are passing a budget that supports the strategic efforts, the four-year teacher agreement, and the 20-year plan to support capital maintenance, which hopefully will be covered in the next few slides. I want to throw the next one. So, what will appear on the warrant in March for the operating budget under Article 2 is as follows. I always like to read this every year in its entirety, and I'll do that now. And it's going to read, "Shall the Sohagan Cooperative School District raise and appropriate as an operating budget not including appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately, the amount set forth on the budget posted with the warrant or as amended by vote of the first session for the purposes set forth therein totaling $18,377,407. Should this article be defeated, the default shall be $18,371,651, which is the same as last year with certain adjustments required by previous action of the Sohagan Cooperative School District or by law, or the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA 4013, Section 10, and 16 to take up the issue of a revised operating budget only. The majority vote is required." So, to break it down, essentially, the proposed budget this year on the ballot is going to be $18,377,407, and the proposed default will be, sorry, the default will be $18,371,651. So, how do we get to those numbers? Some budget highlights to address it. So, as Adam alluded to, as we're looking at this budget, we're trying to balance declining enrollment with the costs and tax impact associated with that relative to cost per pupil while at the same time trying to get into alignment with the modern world and a modern education system. So, as we looked at the budget this year, there's a couple of things that we wanted to do. Now, the first thing at the top, it says that our budget is going to include $485,000 in additional staffing reductions. Part of that is in response to declining enrollment, which we've talked about for many, many years now. But it's also because we're going to ask the public to vote on a separate warrant article to support a new PPC agreement. And in that PPC agreement, we're going to look at increases for our teachers at the high school. So, the board felt that it was prudent to do that. We were looking to partially cover the cost of the PPC agreement through additional costs, and that's where you get the additional $485,000 in staffing reductions. So, when you look at the budget in its entirety, the budget increased by 1.54% over fiscal year '20. If we took out the increases that we saw from special education alone, which is a main driver in this budget, the budget in total would be down a little over 2% if not for those special education increases. So, that's really the point that we want to drive home, that the budget overall, we could have seen a 2% reduction in the budget, but because of the choice we made to offer our special education programs in-house versus sending our children out of district, which actually saved us $6.1 million over time, the budget actually increased by 1.54%. If we want to go to the next slide. This explains it in a little bit of a different detail. This is budget by fund. So, have been asked, you know, what essentially does this mean for people who aren't as experienced with the budget? So, if you think of this like a business, you can think of each of the individual funds like they're their own separate business or own separate division. So, you have the general fund, general division. You have the food service fund or the food service division, and you have the grant fund or the grant division. So, in each of those areas, the grant fund, every year, you really have to spend all of it. It's a wash in terms of its impact on the budget. In terms of the food service fund, we're working on that fund to be self-sufficient. It's almost like a mini-business, so it can be self-sustainable. But when you look at the general fund, it's the general fund that really is going to drive your tax rate. All right? So, if you're thinking about these as different divisions, your general fund or your general division is going to drive the tax rate. So, the general fund is $17,440,198 in the FY '20 budget. That total is going to go up by 1.17%. So, when you think that the total budget is up 1.54%, it's really the general fund, 1.17%, that's going to be a large driver in the tax rate, if that makes sense. I want to go to the next slide. And the last slide that I have before I pass it over to you, I think it's you, right, David?
Next.
Yep. Is the budget in terms of how the Sohagan Advisory Finance Committee looks at it and breaks it down. So, it's essentially the same numbers, just divvied up a little bit of a different way based on how they look at it. So, they look at it based on administration, athletics, curriculum, facilities, transportation, et cetera. And I believe, this didn't get resorted, did it? No. But when you look at how you break all of these budgets down by their various categories, you can see some of the things that I was talking about. So, one of the biggest line items is special education, which is $3.6 million and change. That portion of the budget's going to be up over 16%, 16.34%. It's a lion's share of the increase, and it's the biggest, it's actually, it's the biggest increase. Some of the others are in single digits, but it reflects the fact that, you know, we really made a concerted effort to get our special education students repatriated back into the district because of the overall savings, but it's going to be, as we move those kids up from the middle school, Amherst Middle School, we're going to see that now starting to impact our budget. So, if that makes sense. Even though there was overall savings because those students are coming up from the middle school, it's going to impact Sohagan's budget because we're starting to see the first wave of those kids, if that makes sense. So, when you look at the FY '20 budget, that was right around $18,98,289. The proposed is $18,377,407, which is a 1.54% increase. And that's what we'll end up putting on the warrant. Okay. So, having said that, Mr. Shannon's going to review some additional information for you in support of the budget.
Thanks, Jim. There's some late breaking news here, so I'm not sure I, okay. So, my responsibility here is to talk about enrollment and cost per pupil and things like that. In FY, in FY '20, we closed, we reported to the state 750 students. From that point on, we, our expectation is, is that the enrollment will drop slightly over the course of the next few years and then pick up. Now, how do we know this and where does it come from? In the past, we've used a cohort method for forecasting enrollment. That is, you take the last year's class and move them up, and it becomes the next year's class. A few, a year or so ago, we found a volunteer, right, a volunteer that stepped forward and was going to do some mathematical modeling for us. And we accepted his generous offer of time, and he's basically made a projection based on some mathematical models and data in the community, housing sales, things like that, birth rates, things like that, that would lead to a, what we hope would be, a much better forecast, because we really had no way of understanding what the forecast was coming in from the lower grades, because they're dependent on, if we are dependent on the previous grades, there are no previous grades for preschool and kindergarten. So, we start out the budget process in our minds with what the forecast for enrollment is going to be. And this is enrollment that's shared across both the Sohagan School District and the Amherst School District. And so, we've basically determined that this is the curve that we think we're going to be following. Now, the cost per pupil, the cost per pupil, as most of you know, is driven by a state-run formula that we don't really have any, able to, ability to make any changes to it. It's a function of the state mandate that we, that we produce that number at a certain point in time of the year to show the cost per pupil. And its intent is to regulate the cost per pupil across multiple school districts, and it shows basically nine through 12, it shows different middle school ranges and then early school ranges. And based on that, you produce a cost per pupil even across one district that might be all grades. Anyway, the good news here is that Sohagan's cost per pupil is slowing in terms of its growth. And that's good, you know, that we, that we understand where the numbers are going. And one of the things that is a recognition of that is that we used to be in the 1,000, 500 to 1,000 range. We used to be number one in that range all the time, the highest cost per pupil. Now, there are two schools that have jumped ahead of us, Pierce Sarge and Winnicott, both of which are, have made big strides ahead of us. So, our numbers are stabilizing and our numbers are coming together, I think, fairly well. So, the state average for cost per pupil, it doesn't show that up here actually, but the state average is 16,000, last, in fiscal '20, the state average was 16,600, which by the way, is growing faster than our growth. And Sohagan is $20,849 per student in FY '20. Now, I think, Michelle, do you have a number of a forecast for, a new number for forecast of 2021?
We do have a, it's a rough estimate at this time, based on the projected enrollment of 21,700-ish.
Okay. Let's see. So, the other, basically, we're holding relatively steady, but of course, things are increasing, which is a normal thing that occurs over the course of years. But our enrollment is holding steady, so it's not changing the divisor by much. Okay. As Jim said, you would have seen a 2% or 2.05% decrease in the budget, a reduction in the budget, except for the fact that we had to increase our sped budget with five additional pairs. The five additional pairs really take care of the, these kids, by the way, are new students that have come into the district, come into our district, I would say, some of which are coming up from the Amherst Middle School. And so, we were well aware of those in advance and know where they're coming. So, there's five additional pairs that are built into the budget. Pairs are a very economical way of making, making our state mandates and requirements for special ed kids, and so, it's a very good way of handling that. There will be a reduction. So, basically, the enrollment drives a master schedule. The master schedule is driven by kids enrolling in classes. And when kids enroll in classes, some classes fill up, some classes don't fill up. We don't know that much in advance of, well, we certainly don't know that when we're preparing this budget. But as we do know that, as we do find out what the enrollments are in different classes, we will make adjustments. We've already agreed that there's assessments necessary based on the enrollment, but we will make finer adjustments based on specifics once we get into the details of the final, not the final, but the refined versions of the master schedule. Okay, the last thing is the default budget calculation, which is again driven by a state formula, has nothing to, you know, we have nothing to do, there's very little that we can do to affect this. And as Jim pointed out, that the difference between the budget and the default budget is $5,756. The adjustments that are made are all up there. There are nothing significant that, you know, that we, well, what happens is, is when you drive the budget down and you push the budget down, the default and the budget become very close. It's just by natural, by natural normality of the numbers. And so, by driving the budget down, as we try to do over the course of time, it's made this default budget essentially is just slightly lower than the proposed budget. Okay? Thanks, Jim.
Thank you. Thank you, David.
All right, and I will now speak to the third warrant article, Article 3. Just if you're counting, number one is elected positions, number two is the budget, number three is the PPC agreement. PPC stands for Personnel Policies Committee. It's where we negotiate compensation and working conditions with our professional and support staff. So, the last PPC agreement was two years ago. It was a two-year agreement, so we are now halfway through the final year of that agreement, and we needed to negotiate a new one. So, we are presenting to you tonight, and will be putting on the ballot, a four-year agreement with the professional and support staff. And under the law and the court rulings that interpret the law, we need to project for you the costs of that agreement over its life. So, we have four years of estimated costs. And it's important to know that these are estimated in big, bright, flashing letters, estimated, because all we do is take the circumstances we have at this moment in time and apply whatever compensation or other benefit changes are negotiated to them. As soon as something changes, someone leaves, someone is hired at a different pay scale, all of these estimates go out the window. It's probably safe to say that these are worst-case costs. Almost anything that could happen over the next four years, in each of the four years, will reduce these estimates. So, they come to you as kind of the upper bound of what could happen, and it's very unlikely that even in year one, this will happen because things are going to change that we can't predict yet. So, the bottom line here is, I won't read the whole thing as Jim did because it's really hard to read a table. But in each of the four years, the estimated increase in the budget caused by this agreement is, as you can see, pretty level, 299,000, 298,000 each year. And that was, that was a deliberate effort, not just coincidence these numbers look like this, a deliberate effort on part of all the parties who negotiated, the staff and the administration and the board, to come to something that was fair for the staff and fair for the taxpayers. The key points of this agreement are, it is a four-year agreement, and if approved, this will level out the changes in personnel contracts across the SAU for the administration and for the taxpayers. So, this will get us back onto a cycle where somewhere in the SAU, every year, there'll be some employment agreement, but there won't be two or three appearing in the same year, which is helpful for you and for us. It balances out some discrepancies between our teacher pay and the pay in competitive districts. The biggest driver of this agreement is professional staff, the teaching, teacher and administrative component of the budget. We also do the support staff, but there are fewer of them and they are less well-paid, so it's a smaller portion of this total cost. So, we focus a lot on what we're doing for the professional staff because that really drives the overall cost of the taxpayer. Our current teacher pay is currently about $4,800 higher than average in the communities we compare ourselves against. It wasn't always that way. We got there about four, we jumped ahead about four years ago and have been ahead ever since. Under this agreement, the starting pay will not change. So, we expect over time, our comparable districts will increase their starting pay, ours will stay constant, and we'll get down to, closer to the average by the end of this. At the same time, our experienced teacher pay is lower than it is in competitive districts, or the districts we compare ourselves to. So, this agreement is structured in such a way as to give higher increases to our longer-serving teachers and lower increase to our, lower increases to our shorter-serving teachers so that we can drive our experienced teacher pay up to be comparable to what it is in other districts. And in fact, this doesn't even get us there, and they're all going to move in the next four years, so we'll still be behind, but we'll be a lot closer. So, as you can see on the bullet there, a teacher with 10 years of experience is about $5,900, paid less than, $5,900 less than in our comparable districts now. We'll tighten that gap up, but we won't close it completely, especially because they're going to move too. Another big cost driver that typically shows up in these contracts is health, health insurance costs. We spend a lot, we spent, in fact, a whole year. We spent all last year when we weren't negotiating, just looking at healthcare costs and seeing if we could do anything to improve our healthcare options to our staff in a way that would result in savings to us, the taxpayers, and them because they have the, their percentage of the cost that taxpayers, and them, because they have the, their percentage of the cost that they pay. And in the end, we all agreed that we were kind of at the optimal point. Any changes to reduce costs significantly would cause great reductions in the coverage that the staff receive. And naturally, the staff wasn't interested in that, and we weren't particularly interested in that either. So, there is no change in, in the health insurance plans that are offered, or the percentage contribution that the, that our employees pay, which I believe is still the highest percentage in the SAU. So, they pay more of their insurance cost than, than any other. And that's, those are the highlights. There are some, some more details, but I think, I think what you all care about is the money, and, and what we care about is trying to achieve our strategic objectives. I've covered both of those, so we'll move on to the next section.
I can stay here.
Yeah.
Yeah, can you flip the?
I'll flip.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to talk about our capital maintenance plan, which is the reason for Article Four, which reads, "To see if the Sohegan Cooperative School District will vote and raise and appropriate the sum of $100,000 to be added to the School Maintenance Expendable Trust Fund previously established in March 2005. Majority vote required." So, in order to determine our capital maintenance plan, we had a comprehensive capital needs assessment completed by the firm Onsite Insight that fully examined all of the physical elements of our buildings and detailed all the capital needs over the next 20 years. This work was done for both the Amherst and Sohegan Cooperative School Districts. And this is just an example of the inventory of physical elements of our facilities. So, the capital needs assessment also provided us with the estimated annual expenditures required to meet future capital actions, based on useful life expectations and assuming continued effective maintenance and physical management. So, as you can see from this chart, there are extreme variations in the funding required year over year. Coupled with similar variations in the Amherst School District funding required, this makes for a less-than-desirable impact on Amherst taxpayers in terms of predictability. While as a district, we need to know the funds required each year, we also need to normalize the tax impact on an annual basis. So, using the capital needs assessment, we created a 20-year-by-year plan to determine the funds required to complete the necessary projects, and how much we need to set aside each year to accomplish this goal. So, to demonstrate this, here is a list of the projects planned to be competed, completed at Sohegan over the next five years, which total approximately $385,000. Go ahead.
I didn't.
Oh, you didn't? Okay, sorry. And here is the five-year funding plan required to complete these projects, but with a normalized tax impact on both the Amherst and Sohegan School Districts. This is a snapshot of the 20-year plan, and shows that total funds required are approximately $400,000 for the next five years. So, for this first year, Sohegan is requesting $100,000 to be added to the Expendable Trust Fund, and Amherst is requesting $400,000 to their Expendable Trust Fund. Going forward, both districts plan to request a total of approximately $650,000 to be put into their respective Expendable Trust Funds, which provides a more predictable method of funding than what was provided in the capital needs assessment. So, to summarize, what we have done is to complete a comprehensive capital needs assessment for both the Sohegan and Amherst School Districts, establish a year-by-year plan for capital needs projected over the next 20 years, and determined the annual funding required to execute these projects while creating a consistent tax impact. And what we are proposing is an annual warrant article to fund the Expendable Trust Fund for capital needs projects, with this year being $100,000 for Sohegan Cooperative School District, and complete projects each year in accordance with the capital needs assessment and year-by-year plan, with potential adjustments, adjustments to be made based on the state of systems to be replaced, emergency repairs, et cetera. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Jim to summarize the presentation.
Okay. So, we've covered just about everything. This is a slide you've already seen. Going back to the, the budget goals, though, to pass a budget that supports the strategic efforts, the four-year teacher agreement, the 20-year plan for capital maintenance, what you'll see on the warrant articles, again, is a budget of $18,377,407, with a default of $18,371,651. The PPC agreement number will be 299,102, and the capital maintenance will be 100,000. So, at this time, I'm going to open up for public comment. At this time, I'd like to, there's two microphones in the middle, open it up for public comment.
Hi, Joel Gordon. I had, I was part of the-
Sorry, Joel.
-financial advisory today. I have just a couple of questions on a couple of the different components of what you've laid out here, which fits together very nicely in, in the giant budget spreadsheet that Michelle does is, is really wonderful, lots of great information in it. I recommend it to anybody if they have a week or two to commit to it.
Very true.
The, it, let me start with the last one first, on the capital maintenance budget proposal. Is there, under the Expendable Trust Fund, is there a process for how the money goes in and how the money comes out, so that there's a ongoing balance that, that grows over time? Or is it this, a, just a wash for the funding that goes in every year that you're going to be looking for? That wasn't supposed to be a hardball question.
Yeah, no, no, it's fine. It looked like Michelle wanted to-
Was that a question just directly for Michelle or any one of us?
Anybody that, just looking for an answer.
Yeah, the process of how it goes in and goes out, I mean, it's, the concept is so that we have the fund to be able to use for projects, but we don't want to hit people with the exact dollar amount for the projects for that year, we want to maintain a balance.
Understand, but my understanding is that you were looking for about $500,000 a year? $650,000, I think?
Oh, so that's between Amherst and Sohegan?
Understood.
Okay.
But, but when you raise the money, so you're going to be looking for $100,000 of capital maintenance for Sohegan?
Right.
And then for the Amherst District, you're looking for $400,000 the first year?
Yeah.
My question is, does that get spent in that year?
Is that what?
Will that be spent in that year? So, in the subsequent year, as you do these capital projects, the money is taken out of the trust fund, and, you know, is, is it just an, effectively, an ongoing maintenance expense that we're going to be looking at?
So, we have to vote every, we have to put this on the ballot every year, so this is just year one, that Sohegan is putting it into their own Expendable Trust Fund 100, and Amherst will request their own, and then, and it goes on the ballot?
Okay, thanks.
This is from 2005, from Michelle.
You can do that. The next question I have is, it relates to the PPC agreement. Understand how it was, it, it's put together, the increase that, that, that is across all the salary expenses for everybody that's covered under that, was that incorporated into the default budget total? In other words, the 299 that you have up there, was that part of a default budget? Is that part of the default budget number?
No, because it, it hasn't been adopted by the, by the voters yet, so it's not a contract. So, it's, for this year, it's not in the default. The only way it happens is if the warrant article passes.
Okay, and so that was my last question, that, that the difference between the proposed budget and the default budget is under $6,000. And it does not include the $299,000 increase that, that we're looking for from a salary increase standpoint, so. There you have it. It, it just, it, it doesn't feel, my comment is, it, it just doesn't feel quite right that the default budget is really the same as the, effectively the same as the proposed budget. Doesn't feel like the voters would have a lot of say in what we're going to be doing next year, one way or another.
I'll, I'll start, and you can add on if you want.
But that was not a question, that was really just a comment.
Yeah, no, it's a good, it's a good point, though, Joel, because when we first looked at it, it doesn't feel right to us either. And we know that voters, you know, given the fact we're an SB2 town, and we don't have a town meeting, that's the only, that's the only power the voters have, right, is that they have a choice between a proposed and a default budget. There's, there's kind of two, two, two answers to that, though. One is not satisfying, which is the, the default calculation is what it is, it's, it's a mathematical calculation, you just plug the numbers in, and it just spits it out. And the other piece to that is, is that we, this year, for lack of a better word, like, we really cut deep into the budget this year, knowing that we were going to ask the voters for, you know, this additional dollars in the, in the PPC agreement. We, we cut a lot deeper than the original number that was put forward to the Sohegan Advisory Finance Committee, because we didn't know we were going to have this PPC agreement until after you guys had already seen the number and were comfortable with it. So, we, we, we inflicted our own pain, for lack of a better word, to get the proposed budget number down as far as we possibly could, because that number is actually what's going to yield the tax, the impact on the tax rate if it's voted on. The alternative to that was not make an additional, not make the additional cuts we made, see the proposed budget go up, but the default really wouldn't change. So, people would have a choice, but they'd be voting on a higher budget. So, we, we just felt like the most appropriate thing to do was make the cuts we felt like we need to make, even though the optics to the town was a $5,700 difference between the proposed and the default, if that makes sense. And that's the God's honest truth. I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
I'll just, I'll put on my historian hat again, because that's what I do. I was here for the original SB2 discussions, you can use other nouns to describe what happened, but discussions is the nicest way to put it. And the SB2 law was put into, into place to give voters a choice in districts where expenditures were growing. Where expenditures grow, are, are growing year over year, SB2 default budget calculation winds up giving voters a real choice. Do we want to just keep spending what we're spending, or do we want to invest however the board and administration are proposing we invest? The flip side of that is, it did not anticipate districts that were shrinking or trying to cut expenses year over year. And what happens in that case is what you see here. The way the law is written, and the way that mechanical calculation that Jim talked about happens is, those two numbers get driven together, because the cuts come on both sides, and there's, it doesn't allow for room. The only way we could give the voters a choice is to propose more spending, and the default calculation would stay the same, and the proposed budget would go up. We're not going to play the game, we're just going to make the cuts we reluctantly believe are necessary. I wouldn't say cutting services is fun ever, or something that we want to do naturally, but we know we've got to do it because of the circumstances we're in. And that causes what you have, a lack of perceived choice, because we've made the choices for you, low or low. We picked low.
Ellen?
Hi, guys. Ellen Grujin, Amherst. I just wanted to give the board another opportunity to be more specific about the capital investment, because I'm on the Amherst School Board, and there's more detail I think Joel was looking for, so if $100,000 is put in this year, I believe there are specific maintenance ideas for that $100,000, and if they don't need to be fixed, the money will stay in the fund, and they will be fixed when appropriate. So, just for clarification for everybody, because I'm sure it's going to come up in the next public hearing, it's an important little detail, it's just, the fund's not going to sit there until something needs to be fixed, there are actually items on a list designated.
Right, so yeah, that was the five-year funding plan that was up, I don't know if you can put it back?
I, I could, perhaps, if I hadn't hit the wrong button.
So, we did, right, so we, we have a 20-year plan, but we're just putting up our five-year plan, so those are items that are slated to be done over the next five years. And to be able to accomplish that, we have determined what we need to put in year by year to do that. And it's, you know, should be noted that this is a, a plan, it's based on the capital needs assessment, but things certainly change, but we want to ensure that we have the funding to be able to maintain our buildings satisfactorily. Does that answer your question, Joel? Okay, thank you. Sorry if it was confusing.
Howard Brown, Mount Vernon. So, this capital needs, is that the same as the Expendable Maintenance Fund that we used to have, that we used to put $60,000 in?
Yep.
The rules are the same?
Yeah.
In order to use it, you have to have the board, have to have a posted meeting, and you have to have the board's approval?
Yes.
So, whatever they need it for, so it doesn't necessarily have to be on this, it could be anything else, they could use it for that, for that purpose?
Correct.
Good.
Yeah. Yeah, we're just really trying to be proactive, and that's why we have the capital needs assessment done, so that we can have a clear understanding of what potential needs are going to arise. However, obviously, other things can happen too.
Yeah, background to that, Howard, really quick, is, we have been having discussions around capital needs throughout the entire town, right? So, we had a group of architects come in, they looked at Sohegan, they came up with the Sohegan 2.0, we've had similar in Amherst. We know that we're having issues at, at Wilkins regarding space. So, when we talk as an, we talk as an SAU board, one of the things I think that we all agree on, even though we sit on the Sohegan Board, is that the top priority in the town right now is the fact that our elementary school is not accommodating the needs of our youngest students. So, the question, you know, the question for us, then, is if we put everything in, in town into balance, we're thinking about the taxpayer, you know, not just Sohegan or Amherst or whatever, it's just the, the taxpayer in general, how much burden do we want to put on top of the taxpayer? So, do we dive in to do Sohegan 2.0 and all the costs associated with that, given the fact that, you know, we need new HVAC system, we need to hope, I mean, the school needs, the school needs some TLC right now?
It's 25 years old.
Or, do we take this approach where, you know, as things arise, we have enough money in there, in, you know, and, and not do the Sohegan 2.0 thing, knowing that we have other priorities that are going to hit the Amherst School District, so that we can meet these other needs as they come along, instead of going in big dollars for Sohegan 2.0, if that makes sense?
Right. Now, you're asking for 100,000, there should still, still be some in the maintenance fund, around, what, 270? Is that how much was in there?
Can you clarify? Because we've gone back and forth on a number, Michelle, you've heard two different numbers the last couple of weeks.
I'm happy to share that number. As of the end of November, based on the reports that we have, it, the balance was $249,135. There's probably some change in there too, but I don't have that number.
Thank you. Second question, though, on the default budget, if we pass the default budget and the other one doesn't pass, then do we still vote on Article Three for the PPC? I mean, is it three or four?
Four. Yep.
So, even though we have a default budget, we can still add more money to it by the warrant article?
Or vote it down.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Dwayne Purvis, South Hollis Road. Question regarding, back to Article Four again, in the past, there was a certain amount that was allocated to go into the school maintenance. Last year, that didn't happen. Last year, you also returned about $1.3 million to the community. The terms under which the additions went to the School Maintenance Fund was if there was an excess. Is that correct? Yeah. So, what's changed this year that, instead of the 65 that we always contributed, and last year, we obviously had enough money to make that contribution, why was it necessary not to make it, number one, and number two, to tell the taxpayer upfront, we want to charge you the $100,000? It's almost as if there wasn't anything that needed to be fixed, and I hear you telling me right now, all of us, there were things- me right now, all of us, there were things that needed to be fixed over this last year. So I'm curious as to, why are we doing it this way?
I don't, I'll speak for myself. I'm not sure I understand your question.
In prior years, there was a $65,000, the request that went to the town was for 6, the warrant article, for $65,000 of the surplus. Last year, we had a surplus of about $1.3 million. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, why is it that in previous years, we funded this expendable trust with any excess, and typically, there is an excess? But last year, we did not make a contribution. We gave back $1.3 million. It's difficult to believe that a school 25 years old, there wasn't anything that could have been fixed. Why is it that this year, we're coming forward with a tax as opposed to funding it with a surplus?
All right, so I'll start with what happened last year. So, the large surplus, no one likes, no one officially calls a surplus, unexpected fund balance, technical term. The large fund balance at the end of the year was not anticipated at the time that we wrote the warrant articles for last year's voting. And at the time we wrote the warrant articles for last year's voting, we decided that we had sufficient funds in the expendable trust. The target's always been, if there's nothing on the plate that we see needs to be done immediately, we want to have about $200,000 in there as a, as the standard cushion for emergencies. And so, we had that, we didn't need to add more, so we did not put the funded $65,000 warrant article in last year. And so, there was no mechanism to fund that fund at the end of the year, when we wound up with a lot more money than we anticipated. Also, I'll point out, some of that money was not spendable in any case. Some of it, a large chunk of it, was unexpected revenues. And there's only one thing we can do with unexpected revenues, give them back to you, the taxpayers. So it's not like all that money is money we created for slush fund, it's just money that is supposed to flow to you, so we gave it to you, as good law-abiding board members. As for the change in strategy, whereas for forever, forever, since that fund was created, we've tried to fund it through surplus only, and not cause an additional direct tax burden. It becomes more of an indirect tax burden, because it reduces the amount that you'll save next year in taxes. We now have this capital expenditure plan, which recognizes a reality of life that most school districts don't, and one we've been kind of ignoring as well, which is, everything has a useful life. Everything's going to break someday. You'd better plan to fix it, or you won't have a school. So now we have this 20-year list of every little thing in the school that's going to break over 20 years, when it's expected to break, and when we need to fix it. And this beautiful plan, which was summarized as $650,000 a year across the two districts, is what it will take to keep both districts operating with foreseeable replacement of capital equipment needs over the 20 years. In fact, it extends forever, because you replace something, and then it has its own useful life, and 30 years later, you're going to replace it again. So you can extend this out to the end of the universe. So we want to raise $650,000 a year, rising with inflation over the years, and somehow divide that between Amherst and Southhegan. So there's a constant, a constant tax impact to the voters. As an Amherst resident, you know it's going to be $650,000 for keeping the schools running with the roofs on. The only question is, some years, Southhegan needs a little more to fix some things that are going to break in the Southhegan schedule. Some years, Amherst needs a little more to fix some things that are going to break in the Amherst schedule. So every year, you're going to see two different warrant articles going to our two different trust funds, that together should add up to $650,000. As it happens, this year, we need about 100. Amherst needs about 450. The reason we use the expendable trust fund is, some things cost more than you can ask for in a year, under the 650 leveling plan. So you put things in the savings account, and you accumulate for a couple of years until you've got enough, and then you spend it. So that's, the whole point of this is to level the tax impact to the taxpayers. We have predicted what we're going to need, we're going to go to you every year and say, this is what we need. If you want to keep schools open in the town, this is what you need to spend to keep them open. And the only difference is going to be which school district gets it, and which fraction of it each year. So that, and because we're now basing it not on, let's have some money, and when something breaks, we know we've got some money to fix it. Now it's, we know that pump's going to go in two years, we're going to need a new pump. And we have some very, I'll tell you, we have some very expensive septic pumps to keep the school from flooding, in a bad way. We know they're going to break. We need, we need to fix them. So, we're making the positive choice to say, it's not going to depend on the vagaries of how much surplus there is anymore. Now we're going to be upfront and say, this is the real cost of keeping the schools open, technically, in perpetuity. So, that is a real cost the taxpayers must bear, as opposed to more ad hoc emergency funding that we've been doing up till now. That was a very long answer.
I'm good.
Good.
I'm good now, yeah. Jeanne?
Yes, Jeanne Luton, I'm on the finance committee. My big question has to do with the almost half a million dollars that you took out of the budget, which I believe is reflected in cuts to staff. I think we need a little more explanation on that. I know that you had tough decisions to make. It feels like you're robbing Peter to pay Paul. I'm very concerned about whether the cuts, what kind of impact they will have on our ability to deliver curriculum, programs, services, et cetera, to our kids. So I, I hope that you will be able to provide a rationale that makes sense, because as you, Jim, indicated, those were very deep cuts, and I, I really struggle with that. So if you could give us a little more detail about that, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I'll start. Can I go to you? So I'll just start, and I'll throw it to Adam, which is appropriate. But, okay, so, as we said, part of the impetus for that came from the fact that we really felt like we needed to give our teachers a raise in the appropriate area, especially those teachers who have been here for more than 10 years. Teachers have been here for a while, the younger teachers are, their salaries are very competitive. It's the teachers over 10 years, like we had said, where it's not competitive. And we want to be able to teach, keep those teachers, because they're the, they're the teachers of the future. Those are the teachers we need to remain here for the long term. Okay, so having said that, one of the other things that we've also asked for, and we've kind of been asking for this over the course of several years, and not had, always had a really kind of a great answer for, for this, but it goes to, are we getting the greatest level of efficiency in scheduling, in course offerings, in, you know, I think David alluded to, you know, how much lead time do we get on the master schedule? So, as the PPC agreement was coming along, we had conversations with Adam and his staff around, you know, especially with Bill on the role now, and having a fresh eye on things, has he seen opportunities to be able to get more efficient through the master schedule, and what the impact would be on the staff? So, the answer was yes. We think we can make some additional changes, and that's where I'll kick it over to you, Adam, if that's okay.
Yeah, thank you. So, it's no surprise to anyone that our enrollment has declined the last several years, and it makes sense that our staffing would fall in lockstep with our enrollment. And so, the board was proactive in approving early, an early retirement incentive for staff. And so there were several staff that came forward and have elected to retire this year, which will help us realize some of those savings. Because keep in mind, our experienced teacher pay is twice as expensive as our starting teacher pay. And so when folks retire, maybe it's before they were planning to retire, but they're incentivized, they feel good about retiring, we're not necessarily reducing staff in all cases, but saving dollars that help fund our PPC agreement. So the board approved the early retirement incentive in part to help cover those costs. In addition, we are making some changes to our staffing levels based on our enrollment levels, and we're confident it's not going to have a negative impact on our student experience.
I think we have time, given the fact it's, I think, 7 o'clock, I think we probably have time for one more question, so Stephanie...
Okay, I'll make it quick. I'm going to beat up the capital maintenance budget one more time. So Stephanie Grund, Amherst, and my question is, if, when you go back to the capital maintenance plan in the five years out, I know you've heard me say this, but I keep looking at our chem labs, the sciences, and it's not even on there five years out. And I know it's part of the Southhegan 2.0, but come on, some of your highest achieving students are trying to take AP Chem in a 27-year-old lab? When are we going to do something about this? I mean, enough's enough. We need to add more to this capital maintenance budget potentially to do something.
I'm, I'm so glad that he's, oh, do you want to answer that?
Sure.
Yeah, I'll answer. Good, fine. Go ahead.
I know Southhegan 2.0 is seven years out, but I'm not wanting to wait.
I was going to answer it, because one of my kids is actually one of those AP Chem students who's in those labs, but...
Yeah, mine, mine isn't. So I completely agree, Stephanie. The capital maintenance plan is to maintain our current facilities. Improvements are something we're talking about, in particular with the SAU Facilities Committee, of which you attended last evening. And the board has directed us, I'm sorry, the board has directed me to develop a list of those projects that we need to look at if a surplus exists at the end of the year. And for me, the number one academic need of this school is our science labs. 100% agree.
Okay. And then, my last piece is, so I attended one of your strategic vision presentations. Is there anything in the budget that you've added that starts going towards that strategic vision? So are we, is there anything with software we've purchased to help the individual education plans? Is there any professional development we're paying to get teachers to a certain place? Is there anything we're looking at, agreements with colleges, or anything to do this, you know, potential two-year graduation plan? I just want to be curious if there's anything in the budget with that.
Yeah, the answer, the short answer is no. The more nuanced answer is, everything we're doing is going towards our vision for our school system. And so, the good news is, it's not a, an X-plus situation where now we need to add all sorts of dollars to our budget right now. We've been going down this path for a long time. We've just put a vision to it that extends if we keep going down this pathway. And so we're continuing the things we're doing. We're looking at changing our student information system. We're going to do that anyway, but now we're doing it in the mindset of where we're heading as a school system, right? So we're still making the same decisions we would have made, but they're not costing us more money right now.
The PPC agreement does have an additional clause that enables us to direct teachers in, to specialize continuing education if necessary. So it's given us an option to cause teachers to educate themselves extra in view, to support these strategic plans. But it adds no specific costs next year, so it's not a cost item.
Correct.
Yeah, so it's just an option that we can use in the future with, with budget support.
I believe going forward, what we have to do is set up our meetings so that we're not conflicting with Amherst, so that we have to, you know, really rush this meeting, because I'm sure there's other questions that we could ask, and we feel like now we can't ask them, because Amherst has to come in and do their, their public meeting. So I think in the future, if you guys could, schedule it on a different day so that we can extend this meeting if we have to. Thank you.
Thanks for the feedback. One more.
Okay, I'll ask that you not necessarily answer this question here, in the respect for the Amherst meeting coming up, but that you do answer it, maybe put it in the paper. I love savings, so when I see a budget come in under projected amounts, it makes me very happy, especially when it's tax dollars. $1.3 million, where did we save that? What was, what programs and what was the result of? Was it cheaper by the dozen? Was it, you didn't find ledge where you thought you did, and that sort of thing? Could you please put that out publicly, so that we can see where $1.3 million was saved?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Can I just say that right here, real quick? Yeah, I'll just, I mean, I'll give you that answer, you know, partly right here. The $1.3 million, we were over $1.3 million, because we overestimated special education costs, primarily. So, it's sometimes difficult for folks in town to recognize that. You can have one student walk into your school district that didn't matriculate in the school district the year before, that can cost you upwards of $300,000, that one student. So, that previous year, we had just, we had planned to have more students that we needed to provide for, and those students were no longer matriculating in our school district. The reason, I mean, I'll speak for myself, because we did have a lot of debate on this board, and I think it's probably a good way to close out this meeting, around, what do we do with the $1.3 million? So, I think the board as a body, even though they had maybe some personal disagreements on the board, the board as a body decided to handle it the way we did for this reason, that we didn't want to create a situation where future boards gamed the budget by overestimating the budget, so that at the end of the year, they could say, hey, we have a surplus, let's go spend it on new chemistry labs, right? We felt like, if you have $1.3 million and you overestimate that, you send that back to the taxpayer. It's not our money. And that if we're going to spend money on other things in the school, you put it in the budget, or you create a separate warrant article, so people can choose to vote for it or not. I personally felt, I think the board voted this way, that it was not right to take $1.3 million and spend it as we saw fit, without letting the voters know ahead of time, hey, this is how we're going to spend it, to be precognizant. Now, if we had a list of ready-to-go shovel-ready projects, we, you know, ahead of time with estimates, where we had done, you know, RFPs and all this other stuff, maybe there would have been an impetus to do some things. I personally still would have felt extremely comfortable spending $1.3 million where we never went to the vote or the year before and said, we want to spend the money for this other reason, after telling them we were going to have to spend it for special education. And I think that's where the board landed, and that's why that happened. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
So that concludes the Southhegan Cooperative School Board Budget Hearing. Thank you for...